Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for August 25th, 2015. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Pastor Marcy Miller from Samuel Lutheran Church to lead us in prayer, and we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Holy God, we give thanks to you for this community and for all those who work here to make it a good place to live. We give thanks for our beautiful Lake Shore. Remind us that it belongs to you and that we are only caregivers of it. For children and families getting ready for school, we ask that you would be with them, keep our children safe. For those who conduct business this evening, may they do so with equity and justice. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galeran?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rensselaas-Sibbika?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerks, summary request, to approve minutes of the August 10th, 2015 Commission Work Session Meeting and the August 11th, 2015 City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Youth Basketball League and Open Gym Proposal, Muskegon Public Schools, Planning Economic Development, summary request. The City of Muskegon has contracted with the Muskegon Public Schools for the management of the Youth Basketball League and Open Gym since 2010. The program has been successful, and the schools would like to manage the program for the 2015-2016 school year. The Commission is requested to approve the proposal and authorize staff to enter into an agreement with the schools for oversight of the basketball program and the open gym program. Staff recommendation, to approve the Youth Basketball League and Open Gym Proposal and authorize staff to enter into a formal agreement with the schools. Certification of MERS Representatives, Finance, summary request. The MERS Plan Document provides that the governing body for each municipality shall certify the names of two delegates to the annual meeting. One delegate shall be a member who is an officer of the municipality appointed by the governing body of the municipality. The other delegate shall be a member who is not an officer of the municipality elected by the Member Officer Employees of the municipality. The city employees' units previously agreed to a rotating system based on date of joining MERS to select one official employee representative. This year, the official employee representative attending the MERS conference will be Jan LeBrenz, Customer Service Representative II, from the Clerical Employees Union Group. It is recommended that Derek Smith, Finance Director, be designated as the city employers' delegate. Staff recommendation, certification of Derek Smith and Jan LeBrenz to the city officer and employee delegates at the MERS Annual Meeting in Grand Rapids, October 8th and 9th. Lake Shore Museum Loan Agreement, La France Fire Truck, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and authorize the Lake Shore Museum Center loan agreement relating to the 1923 American La France fire truck with the attached equipment. Currently, La France is on display at the Firehouse Museum on Clay Avenue. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of this loan agreement. Special Liquor License, Michigan Irish Music Festival, Public Safety, summary request, to approve a special liquor license for the Michigan Irish Music Festival to serve spirits on September 17th and 18th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., September 19th, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and on September 20th, 2015, from noon until 6:00 p.m. at Heritage Landing for their Michigan Irish Music Festival event. They have already submitted a special event application. Each serving of spirits must be in a pre-measured format or beverages packaged through authorized manufacturer. No free port is allowed. Their event is a four-day music and cultural festival with food and merchandise vendors, Highland Games, dancing, music stages, and spirit tents. Staff recommendation, the Director requests approval for Michigan Irish Music Festival to serve spirits at their authorized event. MSI Property Agreement of Purchase and Sale, Planning Economic Development, summary request. One of the properties desired for the new market rate housing initiative is the MSI-owned property across from the Nelson Neighborhood Park. The property contains nine lots that can be developed for market rate housing. The agreed-upon purchase price is $45,000. Staff recommendation, to approve the agreement of purchase and sale and authorize the mayor's signature, as well as authorize staff to proceed with the environmental site assessment and closing on the property, signing the necessary documents. Sale of Boat Slip, A08 at Harbertown, Department of Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to negotiate and execute an agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Hall for the purchase of Slip Number A08 at Harbertown Marina. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to negotiate and execute a purchase agreement with the Hall's should staff feel the terms are favorable. Public Safety Director Employment Agreement, removed per staff request. City Manager Employment Agreement, City Manager, summary request, approval of the Second Amendment to the employment agreement with City Manager Frank Peterson. Staff recommendation, to approve the agreement with Frank Peterson, authorize the city clerk and mayor to sign.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda is presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor?
Item F, Fox.
Item F? Any others? Can I entertain a motion, please?
If there be nothing else, I move that we accept the consent agenda as read, except item F.
Thank you. He's right next to you, by the way. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Rensselaas-Sabinga to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus item F. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas-Sibbika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the agreement for the purchase and sale of the property from MSI Property Management.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rensselaas-Sabinga to authorize staff to proceed, let's see, what are we doing? Agreement to purchase and sale of the MSI property. I have this, I asked to have this removed so that council could make a correction.
Commissioner Spataro noted in paragraph four, the earnest money, it specifies out that the earnest money is $2,500, but then in parentheses, it's 2,5000. So the earnest money is actually 2,500.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was going to raise a question on that. Went over and looked at the lots across by Nelson Place, and they're beautiful, well-manned, groomed, and the garden and everything, and well-maintained. And it's going to be a part of the housing thing that we talked about in the Nelson Neighborhood, where we put in $800,000 to build houses. Close to $200,000, we got a grant to tear 22 addresses down. If I were a real estate agent, I want to put all amenities houses we can build right there on those nine lots, because that's a great location, as it said, close to downtown. Now, that would leave us with 22 lots that we're going to tear down, and I always get nervous, because every meeting most of the commissioners go to, we catch it about the city not taking care of city property, cutting grass and all of that. Now, are we going to be able to keep up with that? Or we'll own those 22 locations? Is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. Those 22 locations were already properties that were moving through our process, right? They were ones that we'd probably be willing to demo at some point. They were vacant abandoned or in a dangerous situation. Anyway, so the grant money really helped us facilitate getting those properties down, but the reality is that while we connected the two programs together, they were kind of still separate. So those houses would have been being requested to be torn down over time as we had the funds to do it. The $250,000 allows us to do them quickly to help assist with this housing program. So we want, so I don't think the plan necessarily is to build on all 22 of those lots. We're going to be strategic about where we build and try to cluster new homes together, kind of like you said. This nine parcel area makes a whole lot of sense, because, one, they're all together, and, two, the properties around there seem to be taking pretty good care of each other. And then the goal is to spread out from there. So in some instances, it'll include building on some of those lots that we're tearing down, and in some instances, it will not. But they're kind of unrelated. Those need to come down from a blight standpoint.
Okay. We have not made decisions where we're going to build with the $800,000 that we have.
We made, well, that's what we're doing right now. I mean, we're making a decision to buy these properties with intent on building on them.
Which are great lots.
Correct.
But that's not saying you're going to build on.
Yes. Well, that's what we want to do. From staff's standpoint, that's what makes a whole lot of sense. From the real estate developers that we've talked to, that area makes a whole lot of sense. If there was any part of the Nelson neighborhood to start in, that area just makes the most sense to start in, and then kind of.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Question. Yes, I, do you have any idea how many homes we're going to build on that parcel of land?
Well, somewhere less than nine. Those parcels are narrower than where we'd probably like to be. The goal is to have parcels that are more like 70 feet wide, and I think those are in the high 50s in terms of feet wide, or 60 feet wide. And Larry's looking funny, maybe I'm a little off.
67.
67. So we might lose some, we might end up something 70 or 75 feet, but we know, we don't know for sure. We'll probably reconfigure the lots and see what makes the most sense there.
Okay, market value homes. Okay, we're talking about an estimate of what dollar amount that these houses would be valued at?
Well, the thought process would be, we would build somewhere in the range of the 135 to probably 165,000 to 170,000 dollars for homes. And depending on what the market starts to hold, so as we build them and sell them, we'll start to get a better idea of what the market holds. And we might see that at the higher end makes more sense, or at the lower end makes more sense. But we're willing to get started on it and kind of adjust the program to what makes sense in that neighborhood.
Okay. Just a quick question also. Talking to some of my constituents in that neighborhood, there are some concerns about once these market value homes go into that neighborhood, how would it affect the tax assessment for the other homes if the market, you know, jumps and, you know? So I guess, you know, the question is, if that does increase the property value, and once assessments are done, and it increases the taxes on these other homes, and the people that have lived in this neighborhood maybe 40, 50 years, some of them are on fixed incomes, are we in any, I guess, condition to just kind of get them some type of tax release? Or is that something that could keep their property taxes at a minimum where their taxes don't increase, or they're maybe being subject to losing their homes to taxes?
I can, can I respond?
You may.
And I think Larry might have, or Vice Mayor might have a response too, but, but Proposal A, as it sets now, kind of protects people from that. So whereas, even if the value did make a dramatic jump, the tax value still can only move with inflation until the house sells, or they make a major change to it. Like, if they do a renovation of their own, then yes, you could see a change, or if they sell it to somebody, then you could see a change. But other than that, Proposal A does protect the long-term people who have lived there, you know, a number of years. Whereas the assessed value could go up, the tax value would move at a rate of inflation or 5%, whichever's less. So they would not see a major jump. Although, the goal is to see those values start to rise. You know, they wouldn't see that happen overnight.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Actually, just a couple of comments. One, when we discussed at the Nelson Neighborhood Association Improvement Association Meeting last Wednesday, Director Rubaker Clark was there. The initial reaction from the person who lives closer there was, oh, good, we're going to get some neighbors, in a very positive way. So I think we need to be aware that a lot of us who live in Nelson recognize that having dead spots in the neighborhood where there used to be homes, and used to be families, or in this case, a church, which was one of the anchors in the community, you know, that's not a good thing. And having families and homes anchoring that block again, I think will be very well received. Certainly, the proposal's been pretty well received from the people who would be most directly affected. The other thing is, is that, you know, this is sort of a short-term situation. Those of us who've been involved in the housing issues, and most of that is, most of you up here, certainly Commissioner Hood on the land bank, we have people who want to buy houses that we do using our normal home infill program, who just make too much money. And I think we have to have housing for everybody, rich and poor, you know, black and white, men and women, conventional family, unconventional family. We need to be a welcoming community. And turning somebody away because of some arbitrary figure, like how much money they make, that seems pretty counterproductive to me. And so hopefully, we will help allow people who want to stay in the neighborhood, or perhaps move back to the neighborhood, or perhaps are new to the area entirely and want to be close to where they work, to give them an option of new construction, which right now is pretty limited in the city where you can find new construction. The other part of that is, is that that will help other people who want to buy, get financing, help the realtors and the appraisers and so on, because if I hear one more time about somebody saying, "Well, I tried to get this mortgage refinanced," or "I tried to buy a house, and I was told there were no comparables," there will be comparables now. And hopefully, this will show the private sector that they're leaving money on the table by night, not investing in Muskegon. So that's why I support this. I think it'll benefit us economically, it'll benefit us socially in the neighborhood, and it will help us, I think, continue to grow as a community. So I hope people feel about it as I do, and will vote to support this. I think here is a big hole in the heart of our downtown neighborhood that we can fill and fill well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Just one other question, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea it'll change within the Nelson neighborhood, what market value it's going to be, price range? Are we talking about in there?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, are you asking, what do we think the effect will be on the neighborhood?
No, not the effect, but what these houses will originally be offered for. I mean, I'm just, not a real estate, but buying a Nelson, those lots at Nelson, close to downtown, probably have greater value than other lots.
Yeah.
What's the range?
I think so, and we're expecting really to sell them at our construction cost. So we're hoping to construct them at a cost of, like I said, probably about $135,000 to $165,000, depending on what amenities we want to put in there, because probably we'll have a variety of houses, size, shape, and finishes. But the goal is to kind of make that our sweet spot right there. So I wonder, they are still affordable, you know, they're not, they're not, they're kind of different than what's maybe being built down at Terrace Point right now, which are substantially more than that. But they're, at the same time, they're going to be attractive to what we would expect to be, more like, middle-income buyers.
Thank you.
Just one other thing. I'd like to see also a fair housing agreement, also to make sure that, Vice Mayor kind of touched on this, you know, when you talked about, everyone has the right to have a nice home, white, black, Hispanic, whatever gender or sexual orientation. I just want to make sure that, you know, once we do this, to make sure that, you know, everyone has equal options to purchase these homes if they choose to. So I think we need to hold our finance and bankers accountable, not for just, you know, certain people. So, and I think that's going to build better relationships also, so.
Absolutely.
And I think from a staff standpoint, if it's successful and we're breaking even and recuperating our investment, there's probably not a family we would consider turning away that was qualified to buy, because even if these eight or nine, or however many end up on this block sell, the goal is to take the proceeds from the sale, move out of the next block, and then the next block, and the next block, and really start to fill in those vacant lots, those dead spots that Vice Mayor brought up. And so even if everybody loves this one, obviously, only so many houses are in this initial phase, the goal is, if they really love them, then we'll look at the next block and the following block, and hopefully get some momentum going to where we never have to turn anybody away.
Right. And expand into the other neighborhoods, because we've also identified Angel, as well as the Nims Neighborhood.
Nims and Jackson.
And Jackson Hill, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jackson Hill. But, you know, personally, I think it's very exciting. Sometimes when it comes to being in government, you're damned if you do, or you're damned if you don't. And oft as not, you get challenged, saying, you know, "Why doesn't the city do something? Why doesn't the city take the risk?" Well, in the past 20 years, we really have, in many projects, and we could enumerate those, but we know what they are. And citizens have stepped up in multiple areas with development along our lakefront and in our downtown area, along the business route. But I think this is a marvelous, marvelous opportunity for us, to put our money where our mouth is, and hopefully shake some bushes and engage the private sector, and show what a viable, viable option Muskegon is, to start building new neighborhoods. Because we've all heard from those individuals that want to move in, but housing's not available, whether it's because it's income restricted, or they don't want to do with this old house project, okay? They want something turnkey with modern amenities. Well, we have that opportunity right now, you know, to start filling up our neighborhoods again with families, individuals, people that become a vital part of the fabric of our family here in Muskegon, and that's so darn exciting. Keep people in the neighborhood, or bring people home. So I think this gives us a great opportunity to welcome people back to the family, back on to Muskegon, and continue on with that revitalization, which the most important part is the human element, our friends, our neighbors, any other tax dollars. But, you know, this will be exciting, and we'll see it spread out from downtown into the other near neighborhoods. So I'm fully in support. Commissioner?
I agree. I think it's an excellent place to start, and as you said, to put our money where our mouth is, and show the private sector that it's a little bit unwilling to do this, partially due to a lack of credit, basically unwilling to lend. Unfortunately, we do have some banking partners that have, that are stepping up and going to be partnering with us on this project. And I think the lots that we've selected to start with are excellent place, you know, right outside of our city center. I think there's, I know that there's demand for that. I hear so many times, people wanting to move downtown, and they're not finding what they need, or they are, make too much money, so they don't qualify for some of the lower-income housing options. We do need more market rate apartments as well, and I know that we're working on that, getting more of those downtown. But in terms of single-family homes, those are needed as well, with modern amenities that meet modern demands. I know the city is still seeking input about what people are looking for homes, particularly younger professionals. So I know, Frank, where should they contact? The city clerk, or Kathy, Rubaker Clark, with any suggestions on what they'd like to see being built? It's not only important for that particular neighborhood, it is going to help with revitalization. And I do understand Commissioner German's concerns about property taxes increasing. Thankfully, with both the way that they set up, it's not going to exceed beyond the rate of inflation, so it's going to keep it somewhat in check. I think, because we talked about also, outside of just building new homes, coming alongside some of the other residents in the area, whether it's landlords or homeowners, helping them, connect them to the resources needed to rehabilitate, rehab their homes, because we want to work, we don't want to just build new homes and get new people in there, we want to help the people in the neighborhood as well. And so I know that we're going to be trying to connect them with resources. I think another tool that we may want to pursue is establishing a neighborhood enterprise zone there. I know there's limitations on how many of those you can have in a particular community, but I think it's something that we should look into doing for that particular area, so they can put significant money into renovating their homes without it drastically increasing their property taxes. So I hope that if staff's not already looking into that, that they will be looking into that, that's going to be important. And I'm excited to see this, get new people in there, revitalize our neighborhoods, I think it's going to have, and as it's successful, recycling that money back into the programs in elsewhere throughout our city, and it's going to help stabilize our, and grow our general fund as well, help offset the loss of consumers, COB plant, that property tax. So I'm excited for this proposal, and I'm looking forward to it taking off. At the risk of putting my foot in the water, I think we have an neighborhood enterprise zone set up there already?
Most of that area.
So it's just one more resource we need to remind or inform residents that they have the option to pursue. And we've started doing certificates for the Terrace Point Landing for that, and just let people know in that neighborhood that they can apply for a certificate as well. So I'm glad to hear that.
Commissioner?
Yes, I agree, and I feel that that's a great place to start, and I'll get excited when we start moving to the east part of, east part of the city, and do some improvement there.
Very much. Thank you. Is that it? Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas-Sibbika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. Let's move some dirt. Unfinished business, please.
Section Dash 10351, F3, Registration of Rental Dwellings Ordinance Amendment, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and authorize the proposed amendment to Chapter 10, Buildings, Article 6, Division 2, Subdivision 3, Rental Property of the City of Muskegon. This ordinance amendment focuses on subsection F3, which would allow an alternative escrow option in lieu of dwelling fire insurance. The subsection and associated bullet points, 1-7, explain the escrow option for landlords who cannot obtain insurance or opt not to acquire dwelling insurance to repair or demolish a property after a catastrophic fire event. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approving this ordinance amendment as written.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the ordinance amendment as written.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the ordinance amendment as written. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's been made aware to us, since this would normally be a second reading, but there has been some language changes from what was addressed at our last meeting, so could we have a staff report to explain what those language changes are for people?
Sure, yes. Essentially, if you remember, we had some concern from some property owners that stepped up, and there were two concerns. One, that we were limiting it to people who owned 10 or more housing units, and also that we had a tiered system where we were going to do $10,000 if you had, you know, 1 through 10, and then a higher amount if you had, I mean, I'm sorry, 10 through 20, and a higher amount if you had 20 or more. What we did after talking about it internally is we kind of revamped that portion of it to say, "Let's let everybody who wants to do it participate." So one unit or more, and then we set at a half $10,000 for the total fire escrow. And then with the idea that maybe we can tweak it, but the thought is, is the right that likelihood of one person having multiple homes burned at the same time is probably very unlikely, and the requirement's in there that they replenish it, I think, within a number of days after it's being used. We don't think that there's going to be an issue. The only issue that we think could arise if we have 200 individuals wanting to do this, and that could be a burden on maybe our finance department or our city staff. But the thought process, probably for one unit, it makes more sense for them to go and get insurance. One or two or three or four units, it will, and then when you get up to, you know, five, six, seven, eight, 10 or more, then it's going to make sense for them to come in and look at this option of the fire escrow payment. So while we didn't want to make it available for people with one or more, we think it's unlikely that people will use it. But at least give them an option in this, in the case where they cannot obtain insurance, if for some reason they can't.
I think that reflects the comments we heard at the work session at the last meeting as well. as well. So, you know, when people think it doesn't make sense to come down and talk to your city commission when these issues come up, I think these kind of revisions show that people are listening and we are flexible. So, thank you, Your Honor.
And then I did want to point out, under number three where it says alternative escrow, what's sitting in front of you? Under I, we did, we lowered it to one, but we missed this spot where it still says landlord to own 10 or more. So that will be changed to landlord to own one or more. So I don't know if we formally need to amend the motion or not, but the goal is, is everybody who, if you own a rental unit, you can use it for one, 10, 20, or however many you have. And it is a point to note out that there are, there will be some administrative fees in there. The idea is that we don't want to be a burden on the finance department, but we also don't want to be a burden on the other property owners. So for us, for us to hold it, it's kind of laid out in here, but there will be a one-time setup, $100 administrative setup fee, and then there will be a $25 fee every time you make changes to it. So if you have 10 and you want to add two houses or subtract some houses, that will be a $25 fee that will apply. And we'll come to you guys with that at a later meeting when we update the fee structure, the fee schedule. But that's the plan.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen? That roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Request for $9,000 from United Way for Day of Caring 2015, Department of Public Works. Summary request. Authorize staff to grant United Way's request for $9,000 to purchase and plant landscaping along Seaway Drive as part of their 2015 Day of Caring. Earlier this year, the city received over $9,000 from M.D.O. for a tree cutting violation along Seaway in the city of Norton Shores, and they passed that money to us to do exactly what is being proposed by United Way. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to grant the request by United Way.
Commissioner Hood?
I move to authorize the request for $9,000 for United Way for Day of Caring.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to authorize $9,000 from M.D.O. to be applied to the United Way Day of Caring. Questions, comments? Roll call?
Yeah, just like, so exactly what are they going to be doing? This money's going to be used for what?
They're going to do some landscaping and some plantings. I don't know if they're in the median or they're on the side of the road, Mohammed. He's going to make it.
Oh. Yeah, I'm working.
Could I help you?
The United Way is proposing five locations along the median of Seaway Drive at Hoyt, Sherman, Lake Ten, and Leahy, I believe, two in Muskegon Heights and three in the city of Muskegon, and one at Marquette. So they would be the median for landscaping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call?
And just to confirm, this is cost neutral for the city as well?
Yes.
Because this $9,000 had been deposited from M.D.O. previously to our general fund. So this isn't taking any taxpayers' money from our citizens.
And to be applied to exactly this type of project.
Yes, for landscaping, beautification, which Seaway needs, and it's going to be, you know, looking great, especially with M.D.O. coming through there and replacing Seaway, reconstructing that, and now we're going to be doing some landscaping there. And thank you, United Way, for putting together their team of volunteers to do that.
Very good. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item B, please.
Change order to add Fourth Street reconstruction to Muskegon and Webster contract engineering. Summary request. Authorize staff to negotiate and execute a change order with Jackson Merkey Contractors, adding the reconstruction of Fourth Street between Houston and Muskegon to the Muskegon Webster contract. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to negotiate and execute a change order with Jackson Merkey Contractors to add Fourth Street.
Commissioner Johnson.
I move to authorize staff to negotiate and execute a change order with Jackson Merkey Contractors to add Fourth Street.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Rensselaasipiga, to authorize staff to negotiate and execute a change order with Jackson Merkey Contractors to add to Fourth Street. Did you want to add anything to the issue?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
But we'll take your question first.
Oh, not a question, I just a comment. Thank you to Director of Public Works Mohammed Al Shotel for looking into tacking this on to our Muskegon project already to save us some money. So glad that these projects are being combined and saved us, I think about $24,000 altogether by adding on this project.
And we'll have some engineering, some engineering costs in there, too. Yeah, we do expect a saving.
I could still use some new curbing and a driveway approach on Palmer, Mohammed, if you could find any additional funds. Anything else, gentlemen? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business, gentlemen? Vice Mayor?
Just one item. We had a very lively discussion at the NIMs Neighborhood Association meeting last night, primarily centered around the condition of the Watermark Project. And my understanding is that the developer is coming into town, I think in the near future. And it just, you know, I know we're all on the same page that we want that project done and be successful and profitable for the developer. We understand the economy we've been through, but on the other hand, there's no way to look at that building as you're driving down Western Avenue or turning onto Division or Hudson and not think, this is a real blight. And that's a route a lot of people take to the lakeshore. And, I mean, I've heard those comments over the years. We've worked with them. They've made incremental improvements. But if we have an opportunity to get their ear, if we can do something to light a fire and get that project off center, it would benefit not only the current residents who live there, but everybody who lives in the immediate area. So, thanks. I just wanted to pass those concerns on.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner German?
A couple things. Just update with the EOC Committee. We do have a full committee now. Commissioner Hood and I, we sit on that committee. And it's moving forward. There's some things that are going to be on the agenda, I think that's going to help the community and make them aware of what the mission of this EOC Committee has to offer. Also, I'd like to congratulate the youth league, the football leagues that I see in the community down on the Jackson Hill area. The Port City Director, Mr. John King, is doing a great job with that program. Some of the coaches I've talked to, Mr. Alvin Fletcher, Ed Speech, a couple of other ones, and they really have these kids, you know, involved in sports. Also, I stopped in and talked with the guys that's over the boxing facility down there also. And there's a lot of youth participating in boxing. So that's good, you know, keep them positive, keep them off the streets and, you know, keep them focused. So I'd like to say congratulations to those guys as well.
Very good. Anything else, gentlemen? I just wanted to pass on to folks, I'll get to you in a minute, seeing as I already started, but I'll get to you after I end here, Byron. Had family in from Berlin, Germany last week, and I wanted to take to heart and share the words of a nine-year-old who speaks no English. My, I guess we'll call him my foster grandson. But Theodore made the observation that after being here in Muskegon, he didn't want to go back to Berlin. Theodore wants to live someplace specifically here because not that we took him to all kinds of fun and crazy things to do, but he said to his mother, "These are the most friendly people I have ever met. I want to live in Muskegon where people smile and are friendly." So let's all keep that up so that the little ones that come to town will greet us with their open arms and will match it with ours, and we can make a home for them here. I also wanted to share something that came across my desk in late June, and I've been pressed to share it with the public. This came from a Dr. David Rich, and I did share this with commissioners back in late June, early July. But I think it also shows what type of people, you know, that people see us to be. Says, "Dear sir, I don't recall the pleasure of meeting you during my tenures as city manager in Grand ledge in Plymouth, Michigan. I completed my doctoral work studying local government decision-making using Michigan cities, and they were my cases, and retired to teach in that other state, Ohio. Now rest easy, Muskegon escaped my analysis. I wanted to write a short note of thank you for your service to Muskegon and commend you and the City of Muskegon Board members," my compatriots here, "for serving your community well. I don't hand out praise lightly, so you can trust my sincerity. I have and continue to keep a boat at Torrason's Marine since 1990 and have seen the economic and development struggles of Muskegon, and am thrilled at what I see happening in Muskegon. Small things matter when it comes to development, I know. Slowly but surely, you have transitioned from industry to capture the value of Muskegon as a destination. Not that you ignore business and industry, but that you diversified your economic efforts towards several strategic fronts. From an outsider looking in, not having looked at your physical condition, you are to be commended for achieving a real renaissance in Muskegon. P.S. My children now travel to Muskegon to vacation. Their memories on the lake, the city, and state parks, and the beach set aside for a dog park are often a part of our reminiscence. Respectfully, David Rich." So once again, to all the citizens of Muskegon, thank you for making this a welcoming community and your hard work in the renaissance that we are experiencing. So, thank you all. Commissioner Turnquist.
Thank you. A comment and a question. We went through on consent agenda about our city manager, and we didn't say anything about that. And if you want to read some more good things about this young man, he's got a big article on M. Live tonight, and we just want to thank you for your energy these last two years, that way you've gotten out into the community to meet people. Everybody knows Frank, and I think that's a great thing.
He's probably a keeper, isn't he?
I think so.
Yeah.
I just want to point out that it's a team effort, so obviously it takes you guys up here and the folks out there and the folks that work here to really make this thing work. So one of those legs on the bar stool that will tip over and we won't be able to drink anymore. That's probably a bad analogy.
Oh, no, that's just mine.
Fair enough.
Commissioner.
Speaking of drinking, I'm going to do a plug for Burning Foot. Beer Festival, it's this Saturday at Pier Marquette going 3 to 9 p.m. Tickets are still available. I'm not involved with the Beer Festival. I'm not one of the organizers. I'm not making any money off it, so that's not why I'm doing this plug. I just think it's a fantastic festival. Unruly Brewery and Pigeon Hill Brewing Company came together and formed the Lakeshore Brewers Guild earlier this year and invited brewers from all around Lake Michigan, in Wisconsin, Minnesota, Illinois, Indiana, throughout Michigan to participate. And they're having over 30 breweries coming to our Pier Marquette beach this Saturday. It's the first beer festival on the Lake Michigan, Michigan's shoreline. And so I'm excited for it. It's going to be bringing people to our shoreline and having a good time. There's going to be several bands there and samples of beers from all around Lake Michigan. So tickets are still available, I do believe, so if you haven't gotten yours, check it out. And I hope to see many of the people on this dais and out there at that festival. Should be a good time.
Is this appropriate to wear?
No shoes. If I could just add to that, then, if everybody's going to go carpool with somebody, or I think the trolley's going to be running out there, but they're planning, you know, they're selling 2,000 tickets, and I don't think we have quite that many parking spaces out there, so just expect that. If you can carpool, carpool. Know the trolley's going to run and, you know, help just, you know, be easy on the traffic out there if we could.
Grab yourself a designated driver and go in the explorer of the flex. Commissioner.
I had one more comment, question. Two weeks ago at our last commission meeting, Commissioner Spataro paid tribute to Ken Chudo, who's been on the fire department for many years, of good service, and I'm just wondering if we're planning any type of reception for him.
I think he's got something planned. Maybe he can give you information that she has in her office, but I don't, I think he's got something planned.
So, we don't have any details at this time.
Just one more thing.
Yes.
Okay, over the weekend, too, just like to let everyone know out there that they had a jazz fest, and it turned out really great. It was a huge turnout, a lot of nice jazz artists. So if you like jazz, you know, I recommend that you attend the next one, I mean, because they were coming over from all over, as far as Ohio, Detroit, Lansing, Michigan. And downtown was just filled. So, you know, the hotels was filled. You know, I got a chance to meet some of the artists, and I had a lot of good and positive things to say about the city of Muskegon. So I think we're on the right track, making downtown a more vibrant and inclusive, you know, place for people to just come down there and just hang out. So looking forward to the next one.
Me, too, especially because I didn't get to meet Betty. You did, because I had to be somewhere else.
She was a very gracious person.
Yes, she is.
And she put on a wonderful set. It's gorgeous music, and I hope everybody had an opportunity to appreciate one of our own who brought her talents back for all of us to enjoy.
Fantastic. Any comments from the public at this time? Sir? Just need your name, address, blood type, and favorite pizza toppings.
I'm pretty well versed in this already, I think. Gary DeCamp, 475 West Webster. I just want to publicly commend all of you for doing the right thing as far as the terrace goes, putting the irrigation back in. It's a hilarious point. It does make a difference to let your inputs be heard, and I really appreciate it. I want to thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other members of the public? You look familiar. Why don't you come on up here? You still dating that guy?
Yes, sir. He's the keeper. I'm very grateful to be here today.
We just need your name and address, Mohammed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dolly Hipson, 325 Houston Avenue. Been there now 34 years and love that property there on Houston. Very grateful for your approval of the MSI property sale. And as a neighbor right next door, I am very happy and on board with your plans, and I'm very glad to see you. I lend my support. I just like to say that at this time of the game, that I hope that the developers will keep in mind that we've gotten kind of used to green space and hope that in that development and design, that you will remember that we want some green space, especially with the neighbors there at Nelson Place. We have a lot of seniors there at Nelson Place, and we've gotten kind of used to going across. They bring their dogs over and walk that area. And also St. Joseph Park is right across from there, and I've been dreaming for years of seeing the kids play ball and being able to stroll through there. And I kind of like looking out and seeing some green space. So I was reminded, as I was coming to the meeting this evening, from our gardener, Ms. Laura Swenson, who's a dear friend of mine, that we want green space. So I hope you keep that in mind when you're developing that property. And I'm, my husband and I are so happy to accommodate Frank, and I really appreciate you coming to my house and including me in this, in this plan. And I would say that our city manager is a keeper also. Thank you.
Thanks, Dolly. And thank you for keeping that piece of beauty in the neighborhood all these years.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Matt, Commissioner Hood?
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by the Vice Mayor to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So what are your names?
Good evening, everybody.
Yeah. Did I tell you this?
They are looking at the same house on fairway.
Hi, sir.